Tows city vehicles.
On occasion, when a city vehicle needs a tow.
Right.
But the primary volume of tows is non-city vehicles.
But who pays for the city vehicles?
Well, we would, but we don't have that many tows for city vehicles.
Okay, but the point is, those are still paid for with city dollars.
Sure.
And we don't know who would give the best rate, because I built, there's a figure in that ordinance that states.
Again, if you wanted to know how many dollars that the city paid Hookers personally for the amount of tows that the city had provided by Hookers, the vendor, you could make that request from him. So let's say, in a year, we have forty tows by Hookers. That would maybe be the city's vehicles towed. While Hookers may provide five hundred tows a year, but the city isn't paying for those. The person being towed is.
So it's a professional service, which means...
So, little history about myself. Before I was finance director and before I worked for the city, I actually worked for a tow yard that actually had the City of Barberton tow contract. So I kind of know a little bit about this. So, to answer your question, who pays for the city vehicles? I know when the company I worked for at the contract, we never charged the city. It was part of the tow contract that you do the tire changes, that you tow the city vehicles, because part of that gig is you are getting the tow money at that point in time.
Okay.
From the...
But is that the current?
I would have to see.
Okay.
But I'm just speaking on my experience of how the contract was when I did, when I worked for the company that did the tow for the city.
So, this company just gets to be picked, and they're like the company that gets called for everything, and no other company gets to have a choice, or to get...
They, like I said, the tow companies could reach out to the police department to see if the police department wants to switch, but at the end of the day, like Mrs. Iceman spoke, it's a professional service done by the city. The procurement process for the city states professional services do not need to be bid.
Okay.
So, if...
So the money that's spent for, we don't know if, at this point, we don't even know if the city's paying for it. If the city's paying for it, you're saying the taxpayers and the city don't have a choice on who it is. It's just selected to be them. Because what I'm going to revert back to is before we had the auction, because they've already been established to have some type of shady dealings, because they were buying the impound cars they were impounding for between sixty-five and one hundred dollars. Those vehicles went to auction when there was an ordinance put in, and were selling for, some of them, ten times that. But Hookers was able to buy those, and residents were able to buy those. So, what I'm saying, there's already a tarnished issue, but they keep getting all this business. And I'm not understanding why this professional service that at times could possibly be getting city money for work on vehicles, tow on vehicles, whatnot, because in that, in that article that I found from ordinance eighteen dash twenty-twelve, there is a money figure in it. So that's, that's my big question. They're just being picked when they already have an established tarnished issue, where you might not think it's tarnished, but I really do. I think ethically, if a company is towing vehicles, impounding vehicles, and they're getting the right to buy vehicles that are running, that a lot of the VIN numbers are still registered, for sixty-five to a hundred dollars, that ordinance had to be made to make them go to auction. But that company is providing a professional service. No other company and no other resident. So I'm guaranteeing there'd be thousands of residents if there were cars for sixty-five to a hundred dollars that would come buy those cars.
But sometimes with those titles, you can only scrap those vehicles.
You can, you can only scrap them. I'm sure there are scrappers that would come doing it.
And it also depends on the price of scrap. It is, I know when I used to work for the tow yard, the price of scrap, we might only get a hundred dollars per vehicle.
And, well, if you're only paying sixty-five bucks, you're making a thirty-five dollar profit. And that was back then. But my problem with this is, there was already an issue with that company. We're not, for the, okay, we're going to deem it professional service now. We're not going to deem it a contract or a bid, or this or that. For a professional service that's chosen, nobody's throwing an ethical red flag here to say, why aren't we seeing what else we can have out there?
That would be up to the department to, when they take that request to Board of Control, to look into those things. The department that puts in the Board of Control request...
Which would be the, well, they're not going to put in a request, because...
Yes, they do have to put in their request, because I can guarantee you right now that every single year, the Board of Control approves Hookers towing to renew that tow contract. So, the police department, like I said, should be gathering that information.
They're not.
And supplying that to Board of Control.
Well, they're not. We have a tow truck company right here, who has one hundred percent tried, and they can't get an answer. I've called the other tow companies today. I know it's easy to shrug it off and be like, oh, well, but, I mean...
A lot of time, like, I'm going to go back to my experience with the tow yard. Once we had that contract with the city, it was basically an indefinite contract. Here they're renewing, so if that is still truly an indefinite contract, the only way this police department has to switch tow providers is if they're not happy with the service.
Well, they're not going to say they're not happy. What I'm saying is, why, why aren't we doing what's best for money? And you don't even want to answer on if there is money to be spent.
Well, I'm just, I'm trying to tell you that this, it could be, could be, like I said, I'm not saving it for a fact, but when we had the tow contract...
How many years ago was that?
I started for the city in twenty-eleven. I worked for the tow yard from twenty, two thousand and five to twenty-eleven.
Okay.
They continued to have the contract for a year later, after I left the tow yard. But during that time, that contract was indefinite until either we terminated the contract with the city. Yes, Mr. Greer?
We're going to, we're going to cut this. My suggestion is do your public records request for the money that is spent for towing city vehicles.
Okay.
I will tell you that I know that the police department pays, you know, they charge these people that, like, say I get arrested for, for something, for driving under suspension, they tow my car.
Uh huh.
For me to get that car back out, I need to prove ownership.
Oh, yeah.
I have to pay, I don't know what the costs are right now.
Well, on this one, it says ninety, so I'm sure it's more.
It's more than that, I think. And that's, that's, you know, the person that actually gets their car towed is the one that's paying for everything.
Right.
But like you asked about city vehicles being towed, that's something that you could public records request for.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Do I have anything else from the gallery?
Mr. Greer, thank you, Chair. Just real quick to follow up, you're more than welcome to reach out here for any contact information, our contract stuff, if it's legislation. I just asked, and we didn't get an inquiry about it. We, we store our records. We're not all the same department, so we don't see if you reach out. So, you can get ahold of Mr. Harris, too. He has a pretty good relationship with the department, and he'll be able to guide you, make sure you at least get the answers that you're trying for.
Perfect. Thank you.
Mr. Ed, did you ask him?
Does. Making sure you see the door.
Thanks. Can I get a motion to adjourn, please?
I'll make that motion.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
We are adjourned at six-thirty PM. Thank you, Mr. Harris. Next up is Rules Marketing Development. Ms. Gerhardt.
Thank you, President Greer. At this time, I'd like to bring the Rules Marketing and Development Committee to order. It is Monday, November tenth. It is six-thirty PM. We're in council chambers. All members of my committee are present, including myself as chair, Mrs. Beck as co-chair, Councilman Heidig, and President Greer, all their council members and guests, as noted on my sheet. New requests for legislation, a letter from Thomas Bay Bay Heidig requesting legislation to appropriate one hundred and fifty thousand from the unappropriated funds of the general fund, and directing fifty thousand per year for three years, annual budget twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, to be paid to Main Street Barberton for the economic development of the downtown. Emergency wording and one reading is requested. Everybody saw the request, and then we'll refer this to finance. Is there any questions or conversations on this from my committee? Mrs. Beck?
I'm very much in support of this. I think that Main Street Barberton has done a phenomenal job over the past several years, and I think that we need to continue to support her and her endeavors. I feel like we are about to turn a corner, and I think Main Street has a really big impact on that.
Absolutely. I agree.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone in the gallery? Seeing no more comments, can I have a motion for this?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. In a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Anybody opposed? Okay. And then we held Councilman Heidig's requests. We updated some wording after Mr. Shreve spoke, so I'll read that. I'm sorry, what did I say? Did I say Heidig?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, Councilman Harris. It was the H.
We look alike.
Practically twins. I don't know how I don't do that more often. So, the update of wording, if a person receives a citation or fine for a trash container violation and chooses to appeal the citation to the Board of Appeals, the required appeal filing fee of twenty-five dollars shall be refunded to the appealing if the Board of Appeals overturns the violation. Any questions or comments on that?
That's what we're trying to get to.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Hearing none, can I have, and we'll just vote on this in two weeks. Councilman Heidig. Can I make, can I have a motion for this?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. In a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Perfect. Thank you. There's no pending, and there's no miscellaneous. Does my committee have anything? You know it's coming. Don't even look at me like that.
I didn't ask a thing.
Your eyes are... Anything from the rest of council or the gallery? Oh, Mr. Greer?
Thank you, Chair. Just a heads up. It's officially written in stone. I am calling for the rules at the next legislative meeting. We established that. So, that'll be, just so you guys are aware, that'll be a miscellaneous, but it, it needs to be on the agenda to do so. So, that's why we're going to push it to the next one, next legislative meeting. Thanks, Chair.
You're welcome. Thank you for your patience, Councilman Heidig. Seeing no more conversation, can I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. In a second?
Second.
Thank you. We are adjourned at six-thirty-four PM.
Thank you, Ms. Gerhardt. Next up is City Utilities. Mr. Griffin.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to call this meeting to order today, November tenth. We're in council chambers. All members of my committee are present, myself as chair, Jennifer Hager, Emily Beck, and Justin Greer, and all others who noted. We have one request for legislation to call for tonight, and we have no pending legislation. We have a letter from Taj Reed, Service Director, requesting legislation to enter into contract with Hisan Kenworth of Richfield, Kenworth, in the amount of seven hundred and eighty-six thousand, nine hundred and ninety-two dollars for the purchase of three new twenty-twenty-five Kenworth T four eighty snow and ice trucks. Emergency wording and one reading requested. Please see the request, and we will refer this to finance. Do I have a motion to call for this?
Thank you, Chair. Director Shreve is not here. Mayor, perhaps you can answer. This is for three new trucks?
Correct.
If, if this were to pass, how fast can we add them to our fleet? Is this something that we're a year out, or is this something that's pending on us?
No, these vehicles are already built. So, I'm assuming as soon as Mr. Flaker can get the financing taken care of, which I believe he's already started working on, he should be able to see them fairly quick.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Any more remarks, Emily?
Since Mr. Shreve isn't here, you may, may not know. Will we be going to sell anything that we have that doesn't work, or I feel like there's a lot of trucks?
I can't say that we would because of this purchase, but we've been cleaning up the yard for the last two years. Almost done with the, the former orange trucks. They used to be dedicated for streets, and now we're white, all departments. So we have a few more orange trucks down there. I don't know their, what kind of shape they're in. So we want to be getting rid of things just because we purchased these, that I'm aware of, but we're actively always looking at making room.
Thank you.
Mr. Heidig?
Thank you, Chair. Councilor Beck, to the mayor's point, in six years, I've seen Hisan Kenworth many times. A lot of times, the parts are old and battered. We'll hang on to them, because sometimes the parts are interchangeable for the garage. If someone breaks down, we can just strip them off and then patch up everything else. I have seen this vendor over six years many times.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any more remarks? There are none. I have a motion to call for this.
I'll make that, please, Emily.
Thank you. Emily, second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Emily. All in favor?
Aye.
So it's a pass. We have no pending legislation for utilities. Do we have any miscellaneous from council or gallery? Hearing none. I have a motion to adjourn. Thank you. Emily, second?
I will second.
Thank you. We are adjourned at six-thirty-eight. Six-thirty-eight. Without a pass.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin. Last but not least, Finance, Personnel, with Mrs. Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to bring the Finance and Personnel Committee to order. It is Monday, November tenth, twenty-twenty-five, six-thirty-nine PM here in council chambers. All members of my committee are present, which includes myself as chair, Mr. Heidig, Mr. Griffin, and Mr. Greer. All other council members are also present, as well as guests as noted on my sheet. First up, we have the presentation of the finance report for the month of October twenty-twenty-five with Mr. Flaker. Did he? Okay, we'll come back to that. Pending legislation for finance, we have ordinance number one fifty-eight, twenty-twenty-five, title entering the contract, Medical Mutual. This would authorize the mayor to approve the renewal contract with Med Mutual Life for group life insurance from January first, twenty-twenty-six through December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-six, and declaring an emergency. Ordinance one fifty-nine, twenty-twenty-five, title entering the contract, MetLife Vision. This would authorize the mayor to approve the renewal contract with MetLife for employee vision coverage, beginning January first, twenty-twenty-six through December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-seven, and declaring an emergency. Are there any remarks on those? Hearing none. I guess we will open it up to miscellaneous for either my committee or council members. Well, I guess we will just pause for a moment, or we can do this next time. I don't...
You can skip if he's not here. We've done it before. You mean the?
The financial report?
Financial report?
Yeah, the financial report.
We could do it next week since the committee...
That's what I was thinking, yeah. Okay. Yep, we'll just push the, the financial report to next week. So, all right, well, with nothing else, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Thank you. In a second.
Second.
You're adjourned at six-thirty-one.
I would just have it. Thank you, Mrs. Thompson. That concludes our individual committee reports with no objection.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
You know I'd read that if it was on there still.
I know.
I'm on burgundy.
Get that out. All right. With no objections, I'd like to roll right into this regular legislative meeting. All right. Today is Monday, November tenth, twenty-twenty-five. It is six-thirty-two PM. I call this, this is a regular legislative meeting of Barberton City Council. I call this meeting to order at six-thirty-two. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance, followed by invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, I ask that you continue to watch over our city, its residents, and all the employees. Help us to be fair and partial, compassionate, and understanding. Will you please continue to watch over our safety forces, our teachers, our, all the, our children, and as always, remember the twenty-two. Thank you. Amen. All right, quick, please call the roll.
President Greer?
President.
Mr. Heidig?
Here.
Mrs. Thompson?
Here.
Mrs. Hager?
Here.
Mr. Easterwood?
Here.
Mr. Griffin?
Here.
Mrs. Beck?
Here.
Ms. Gerhardt?
Here.
Mr. Harris?
Here.
All right. Approval of the minutes of the regular legislative meeting held on Monday, October twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-five, as presented. Mr. Ed?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to approve the minutes of the regular legislative meeting from Monday, October twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-five.
Thank you, Mrs. Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to second Mr. Heidig's motion to approve the minutes.
Thank you. A motion was made by Mr. Heidig and seconded by Mrs. Thompson to approve the minutes of the regular legislative meeting held on October twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-five, as presented. Are there any remarks? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, minutes are adopted. We're going to forego the approval. Oh, correct. See, and I still read it, and you scratched it out. All right, petitions and claims?
We have none.
Matters requested?
They have all been listed.
Citizens addressing council. We have two. Mr. Bogart, step up, please. Stick your name, address, reason for speaking. You got five minutes, and just note the council will not be able to respond back.
I don't need five. Dan Bogart, fourteen oh five grand. I have an issue with this data center legislation. There's no definition of what a data center is in the legislation, so I went ahead and pulled it up in about three seconds. A data center is a physical facility that houses an organization's IT infrastructure, including servers, storage, and network equipment. There's two of them in this building. There's... two of them in this building. There's 100 or more. There's one in every grocery store, every dollar store. There's no definition in this legislation with what a data center is. By the definition, I manage three myself. The hospital has it, BW has it, BWS, they're all over. I host websites on a credit card size server in my basement. But I agree that we don't need a 565,000 square foot data center the size of two Super Walmarts in Barberton. I find this legislation to be totally asinine and completely anti-business in this city.
Thank you, Ms. Gehr. Miss Me, had a piece of paper filled out. Do you want to say anything?
I did, but I spoke. He didn't fill it out, and he wants to.
All right, well, just make sure you fill it out. But you can, you can come up if you wanted to speak.
You go, Chair, you tell. But they can't answer your questions.
Just, yeah, just state your name, address, reason for speaking. We'll give you five minutes, and you can't speak, and it can't be anything that's not on the agenda.
So, the towing?
Correct. It wasn't on our agenda. I apologize. I should have said that before you got up.
No worries. Thank you.
Yeah, so the way legislative meeting, just so everybody's aware, again, anybody watching, our sound's off so they won't see it. There was a complaint that I stopped somebody from speaking just like that before. I want to make it known that anybody speaking in front of council on regular legislative nights can only speak about things that are on the agenda. That is the reason, unfortunately, why I can't. But you're more than welcome to stake back and talk to us afterwards. But, and then, if, committee of the whole meetings, it can be about anything. So, I do apologize. I should have mentioned that before we left, or before you came up. Is there anybody else, any public wanting to address council? All right. First reading of ordinances and resolutions.
Resolution number 157-2025, presented by Mr. Heiduk, title "Moratorium Data Centers Within Barberton," and ordinance "Instituting a Moratorium on Data Centers Within Barberton, and Declaring an Emergency."
Motion to suspend. Mr. Heiduk.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rule required by section 5.10 of the Barberton City Charter be suspended.
Thank you. Mrs. Thompson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to second Mr. Heiduk's motion on suspension.
Thank you. A motion was made by Mr. Heiduk and second by Mrs. Thompson to suspend the rule as required by section 5.10 of the Barberton City Charter. Are there any remarks? Clerk, please call the roll on suspension.
Mr. Easterling.
Yes.
Ms. Gerhart.
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Mrs. Hager.
Yes.
Mr. Heiduk.
Yes.
Mrs. Beck.
Yes.
Motion for suspension carries. Motion to adopt. Mr. Heiduk.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to adopt resolution 157-2025.
Thank you. Mrs. Thompson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to second Mr. Heiduk's motion on adoption.
Thank you. A motion was made by Mr. Heiduk and second by Mrs. Thompson to adopt resolution number 157-2025. Are there any remarks? Mr. Heiduk.
Thank you, Mr. President. The purpose of doing something like this, and I look to Mr. Bogart for his remarks there, we don't have a definition in our development code. We don't have anything regarding data centers, size, definition, heights, anything. And I do understand the fact that these are legitimate businesses and moving forward, and given the parliaments of our time, they're an evil necessity. It's going to happen. However, we are in a unique situation where our development code, according to Director Carr from an email today, will be in our hands and be able to be voted before the end of this year. It's taken three years for that development code to even see us in any sort of final form. If we were to do all the homework on all this and then relay it to the consultants that are handling it, given the state that it's taken them, that could delay that project another eight months. I fully believe that. Therefore, I believe it's best to get the development code by the end of the year, then have the chance to amend that, which would be within a few weeks of work from the council and the planning department versus eight months of OHM dragging their feet and sending the wrong thing back, and Director Miller having to send it back 18 times because they keep putting the wrong words in. That said on top of that, our situation becomes, even if we were to try to do something, this is the end of the legislative session. It would fall off before the end of the year, which would, again, throw that development code into a tizzy. We also have new council members coming on. We have a lot of different factors that are screwing up this timing. Unlike Norton, Norton proposed 180-day moratorium on them. Norton had uncontested elections. They knew from the May primary that they were all going to be returning. They had the chance to do work, even at the end of their session, that they could potentially carry over notes and anything like that. We don't have that luxury. That's why I feel that this was important, because it's a simple repeal of this. Once the work is done, the development code's done, and a new council can repeal it, put the new one in place, and protect our residents from distances, height, noise, you name it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Heiduk. Are there any remarks from the body? Clerk, please call the roll on adoption.
Mrs. Beck.
Yes.
Mr. Heiduk.
Yes.
Mr. Griffin.
Yes.
Mrs. Hager.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Gerhart.
Yes.
Mr. Easterling.
Yes. Motion for adoption carries.
Ordinance number 158-2025, presented by Mrs. Thompson, title "Enter into Contract Medical Mutual," and ordinance authorizing the mayor to approve the renewal contract with Med Mutual Life for Group Life Insurance from January 1st, 2026 through December 31st, 2026, and declaring an emergency.
Motion to suspend. Mrs. Thompson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rule as required by section 5.10 of the Barberton City Charter be suspended.
Thank you. Mr. Heiduk?
Thank you, Mr. President. I will second Counselor Thompson's motion on suspension.
Thank you. A motion was made by Mrs. Thompson and second by Mr. Heiduk to suspend the rules required by section 5.10 of the Barberton City Charter. Are there any remarks? Clerk, please call the roll on suspension.
Mrs. Hager.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Easterling.
Yes.
Mr. Heiduk.
Yes.
Mrs. Beck.
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Griffin.
Yes.
Ms. Gerhart.
Yes.
Motion for suspension carries. Motion to adopt. Mrs. Thompson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of ordinance number 158-2025.
Thank you. And Mr. Heiduk?
Thank you, Mr. President. I will second the motion to adopt.
Thank you. A motion was made by Mrs. Thompson and second by Mr. Heiduk to adopt ordinance number 158-2025. Are there any remarks? Clerk, please call the roll on adoption.
Ms. Gerhart.
Yes.
Mr. Griffin.
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson.
Yes.
Mrs. Beck.
Yes.
Mr. Heiduk.
Yes.
Mr. Easterling.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Hager.
Yes.
Motion for adoption carries.
Ordinance number 159-2025, presented by Mrs. Thompson, title "Enter into Contract MetLife Vision," and ordinance "Authorizing the Mayor to Approve the Renewal Contract with MetLife for Employee Vision Coverage Beginning January 1st, 2026 through December 31st, 2027, and Declaring an Emergency."
Motion to suspend. Mrs. Thompson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rule as required by section 5.10 of the Barberton City Charter be suspended.
Thank you. Mr. Heiduk?
Thank you, Mr. President. I will second Counselor Thompson's motion on suspension.
Thank you. A motion was made by Mrs. Thompson and second by Mr. Heiduk to suspend the rule as required by section 5.10 of the Barberton City Charter. Are there any remarks? Clerk, please call the roll on suspension.
Mrs. Beck.
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Ms. Gerhart.
Yes.
Mr. Heiduk.
Yes.
Mrs. Hager.
Yes.
Mr. Easterling.
Yes.
Mr. Griffin.
Yes.
Motion for suspension carries. Motion to adopt. Mrs. Thompson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of ordinance number 159-2025.
Thank you. Mr. Heiduk?
Thank you, Mr. President. I will second the motion to adopt.
Thank you. A motion was made by Mrs. Thompson and second by Mr. Heiduk to adopt ordinance number 159-2025. Are there any remarks? Clerk, please call the roll on adoption.
Mr. Griffin.
Yes.
Mr. Easterling.
Yes.
Mrs. Hager.
Yes.
Mr. Heiduk.
Yes.
Ms. Gerhart.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson.
Yes.
Mrs. Beck.
Yes.
Motion for adoption carries.
Ordinance number 160-2025, presented by Mrs. Beck, title "Street Dedication New Haven East and West," and ordinance "Allowing the City of Barberton to Dedicate All Roads Not Previously Dedicated in New Haven West and New Haven East, Phase 1, 2, 3, and 4, and Declaring an Emergency."
Motion to suspend. Ms. Beck?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rule as required by section 5.10 of the Barberton City Charter be suspended.
Thank you. Mr. Harris?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move, or excuse me, I will second her motion on suspension.
Thank you. A motion was made by Mrs. Beck and second by Mr. Harris to suspend the rule as required by section 5.10 of the Barberton City Charter. Are there any remarks? Clerk, please call the roll on suspension.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Ms. Gerhart?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Heiduk?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Motion for suspension carries. Motion to adopt. Mrs. Beck?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of ordinance 160-2025.
Thank you. Mr. Harris?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move, I'd like to second Mrs. Beck's motion on adoption.
Thank you. A motion was made by Mrs. Beck and second by Mr. Harris to adopt ordinance number 160-2025. Are there any remarks? Clerk, please call the roll on adoption.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Heiduk?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Gerhart?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Motion for adoption carries.
Ordinance number 161-2025, presented by Mr. Easterling, title "Permission to Sell City-Owned Residential Buildable Lots," and ordinance "Authorizing the Planning Director to Sell City-Owned Residential Buildable Lots at a Rate As Sent Forward by City Council, and Declaring an Emergency."
Motion to suspend. Mr. Easterling?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rule as required by section 5.10 of the Barberton City Charter be suspended.
Thank you. Ms. Gerhart?
Thank you. I'd like to second Mr. Easterling's motion on suspension.
Thank you. A motion was made by Mr. Easterling and second by Ms. Gerhart to suspend the rule as required by section 5.10 of the Barberton City Charter. Are there any remarks? Clerk, please call the roll on suspension.
Mr. Heiduk?
Yes.
Ms. Gerhart?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes. Motion for suspension carries. Motion to adopt. Mr. Easterling?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of ordinance number 161-2025.
Thank you. And Ms. Gerhart?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to second Mr. Easterling's motion on adoption.
Thank you. A motion was made by Mr. Easterling and second by Ms. Gerhart to adopt ordinance number 161-2025. Are there any remarks? Clerk, please call the roll on adoption.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Gerhart?
Yes.
Mr. Heiduk?
Yes.
Motion for adoption carries.
Ordinance number 162-2025, presented by Mr. Easterling, title "Permission to Sell City-Owned Residential Non-Buildable Lots," and ordinance "Authorizing the Planning Director to Sell City-Owned Residential Non-Buildable Lots at a Rate As Sent Forward by City Council, and Declaring an Emergency."
Motion to suspend. Mr. Easterling?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rule required by section 5.10 of the Barberton City Charter be suspended.
Thank you. And Ms. Gerhart?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to second Mr. Easterling's motion on suspension.
Thank you. A motion was made by Mr. Easterling and second by Ms. Gerhart to suspend the rule as required by section 5.10 of the Barberton City Charter. Are there any remarks? Clerk, please call the roll on suspension.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Heiduk?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Ms. Gerhart?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Motion for suspension carries. Motion to adopt. Mr. Easterling?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of ordinance number 162-2025.
Thank you. Ms. Gerhart?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to second Mr. Easterling's motion on adoption.
Thank you. A motion was made by Mr. Easterling and second by Ms. Gerhart to adopt ordinance number 162-2025. Are there any remarks? Clerk, please call the roll on adoption.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Ms. Gerhart?
Yes.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Heiduk?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Motion for adoption carries.
This ends the first reading.
Second reading of ordinances, resolution.
We have none.
Third reading of ordinances, resolution.
We have none.
Appointments.
We have none.
Miscellaneous and unfinished business.
Liquor license. We have two. The first one is new, D-5J, to Clem's Restaurants LLC as Clem's Vital Bites at 477 and 475 West Tuscarawas Avenue in Barberton, Ohio.
All right. For future reference, and all council knows this, but I just want to say it again, that if, the objections need to be made sooner than they're read today. Right? There's not enough time to go to the state. We've run out of a deadline to pass legislation to officially object if there is one. However, with that said, are there any objections? All right, we'll move on to the next.
Okay, liquor license. It's a new D1, D3, and D2 for, I'm going to butcher this, Luciano Bar and Grill LLC at 861 Worcester Road West, Barberton, Ohio 44203.
Thank you. Same thing goes. All liquor licenses. We just hadn't had them in a while, so I wanted to re-mention that. As long as there's no objections, none. All right.
Well, the first one, the Clem's Restaurants LLC, D5J. That is the new entertainment district license. When you in the future see D5 with a J next to it, that's what that signifies. For Luciano Bar and Grill, D1 is beer only until 1:00 AM. D3 is hard liquor until 1:00 AM. D2 is wine and low-proof spirit, still 1:00 AM, Monday through Saturday for all of them. That's it.
Thank you.
Councilman Heidig, I'd like to apologize. We've been together for six years, and I don't think I've ever skipped over you explaining what those licenses mean.
Just so everybody knows what they are when they're read.
Yep. All right. With no other liquor license, anything from the body at all? Ms. Gerhardt.
The White Rabbit Gallery is hosting the Wall, which is a traveling veterans memorial. I got to go check it out yesterday. It's very nice, very well done, very touching. It still has tomorrow.
Tomorrow from 10 to 8.
So that, tomorrow's the last day, so I thought it might be nice to invite people at the honor roll in the morning to make sure they check it out after their free donut at the VFW.
Mr. Harris.
Also, I'll extend an invite to all veterans from 6 to 8 tomorrow evening at the White Rabbit Gallery, so we're having a reception for all veterans. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Anybody else on the? I do have a question for you, Mr. Harris.
Yes, sir.
The honor roll.
Yes, sir.
Does that still go tomorrow?
From what I understand, yes. 11:00 AM at the memorial, War Memorial. And then, if the weather is bad, I would imagine they'll move it to the VFW.
Okay.
But that may not, we may not know that till, you know, 9:00 or 10:00 in the morning. But you can always stop at the VFW prior to, and make sure.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Harris. Again, tomorrow is Veterans Day, so thank you to all the veterans. Communication from the mayor. What's that?
No updates.
I'm sorry. I skipped you, but, or didn't skip you, I skipped the department heads, but there is none. So, oh, yes, there is.
Hi, I just wanted to name counsel for the sale of the lots. So Hannah from my office has been working with the planning department, and Stacy and Missy and her have been drawing up lots of drawings of wards and so forth, and getting letters out to folks. And I don't know if many of you have noticed, but on State Street across from the old Woodford, there's two houses, maybe three, going up right now. Those were buildable lots that they were able to get rid of. And I think of city-owned, non-buildable lots. The letters that went out, I think we sold, we, the city, through Teresa in planning, have sold seven, I think she said, right now. So that's pretty exciting to get rid of those. President Greer, I think, have you gotten a request from Missy to do a work session?
I haven't seen one, but.
Okay, so.
We'll make it happen.
Pardon me?
We'll make it happen.
Yeah, it's just a short, so what they've developed over there is a list of non-city-owned back-tax lots with a letter that they put together for council members to be able to go to residents who live adjacent to back-tax lots, so that they could get them through the land bank. We could just send them out to the residents, but we thought it'd be better for, in your ward, and so four has a lot, five has a lot. And that you could deliver them personally to those residents. That way you can, the purpose of the work session is for someone from planning, and that someone would not be me. I don't understand it, to be honest with you, maybe, Corey. But to explain what land bank is, and how you communicate with them, and how you can take the opportunity to get those lots. The real purpose is, as one former council member said, we should not be in the business of mowing lawns, right? And many of these back taxes are because of us mowing their lawns, plus raising the house that used to be on it. So, you know, Stacy and her staff came up with that, and I just merely approved the letter. So they've created the graphics, they've created the letters in cooperation with the land bank. So just want to get those out to you guys, so you can go and, or your wards, and get these letters out, and hopefully get some, you know, lots off our mowing list. To be honest with you, there's over 100. So that's on the thing, and then on top of the city-owned lots that you have, you know, we could really diminish mowing for our crews in the summer to focus more on, you know, what really needs to be done out there, so that they can really focus on those things instead of mowing those lots that aren't mowing their own lots. So, so thank you for that, and it's an exciting project that they've been working on in planning. Sorry, Corey, I didn't mean to steal your thing, but I'm just excited about the work, and so thank you for that.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. I did get that email, and we'll make that executive session happen.
Thanks.
And council will get a copy.
Not executive work.
Or not executive, yeah, the work session. And I'll forward documents to everybody. Mr. Heidig.
Thank you, Mr. President. Director Miller, was there any traction for those vacant lots that would be in flood zones to be able to be bought with deed restrictions?
Yes, yep, so specifically, there are certain, obviously in the 5th Ward, near, the FEMA zone, right? So 14th, 15th Street, right? Those are non-buildable lots, right? There is also some in the, I don't know what you would call it, the 3rd Ward off of Snyder, in the Snyder-Bambaran area, right? So those lots, while not designated unbuildable, after speaking to Caroline Crawford. Always want to revert her tear to Caroline North, not her name anymore. She hasn't been there for many years. Her preference would be for them to be non-buildable. Of course, because it just attributes to issues down there, and as you know, we've spent